We have a public hearing. Is everybody here present? Is there a data?
Yes, Madam Council President, I understand that Mr. Bradshaw is here representing the licensee and I suspect that the principal of the licensee is also here. For the benefit of the public as well as to refresh the council's reputation, this matter comes before the council to review special conditions that were placed upon this license at the time of renewal pursuant to resolution R-061220. At the time of the renewal of this particular license, the city council placed special conditions on this licensee. At the time of placing those special conditions, the council also elected at that time to suspend one of the special conditions dealing with the cessation of music on Saturday and Sunday evenings. The council decided that if we visit this particular licensee to monitor and obviously obtain information, reporting on the ongoing operations of the establishment to determine how the special conditions and the cessation of the music special condition was working out. And tonight is that particular hearing for purposes of reporting to the city council. I know that Detective DeBonis is here this evening, I think, there he is, who I would ask to address the council in the first instance relative to the activity in and about the license process.
Detective DeBonis?
Yes, Detective DeBonis, please. From February 15, 2012 to February 15, 2013, there were 96 calls for service at the Degala, 156 Commercial Avenue. Fifty-six of these calls for service were noise complaints. Twenty-five calls for service were for disorderly persons or disorderly offenses. At this point in time, we received a letter, I should say, dated March 15th, from the Second Ward Crime Watch, wanting to reinstate the previous conditions of the establishment and whether there are some members of the community and residents that would like to speak on behalf of these specific violations.
Thank you.
Madam Council President, what I would suggest is perhaps we hear from any members of the public and then give Mr. Bradshaw an opportunity to address the council and any response that he may have on behalf of the licensee. That might be a way to proceed or a way to address it.
Any members of the public would like to address the council on this specific public hearing about Degala Cafe? Name my address, please.
William Barker, 154 Commercial Avenue.
Go ahead.
Okay. I was involved in the original case, I guess it was in 2000, that put the conditions on Degala. And unfortunately, shortly after those conditions we were put on, we were actually attacked several times, there was a double arson attack on our house and my house next door. So we got a little shy about coming to city council meetings and it was a little post-traumatic, stressed about the whole thing. Anyways, there was also a home invasion that happened and attempted home invasion, so we felt pretty on the spot. Anyways, we decided to stay in our home and stay here and defend it. I guess what happened in about 2009 was conditions were suspended because we weren't coming to city council meetings, we were too scared basically to show our faces, and so nothing happened. Finally, you guys suspended the restrictions. Now, we did some research, and this is actually Mike's, Mike DeBonis's tavern report, from 2009 when the restrictions were in place to 2012, when the restrictions, you know, I guess the last tavern report. And what shows is a line that goes like this, Degala. In 2009, we have, with the restrictions in place, we had 10 calls for service. 2010, it goes to 34. 2011, it goes to 54. 2012, 83. The most complained about tavern in New Brunswick, the highest number of calls for service in the tavern report. And we actually see that in 2011, the trend citywide went down, number of calls for service went down. But Degala, straight up. So that alone, I would think, if you can see where the calls for service, where the suspension went off, suspension of the, pardon me, of the restrictions went off. I just want to see copies of this, pass this around. Complaints went straight to the booth. So, and I have copies of tavern reports from those years as well. So you can see, we're not making these, these are your numbers, this is state of New Brunswick's numbers. And this is a waste of the public's money, waste of our public resources. We also have, we don't usually keep track of all our phone calls, but since 2000, I guess in late 2012, we had rocks thrown through our window because a patron was urinating against one of our vehicles. I stopped him, he tried throwing something at me, police officer intervened, and then someone, I can't say it was him, but someone came back 15 minutes later with a rock through, actually, one of my tenants' windows. And we filed a police report and were very upset about it. And so violence is occurring, directed on us because we don't want people urinating on our cars every night. Literally, if you poke your head out at night at 2:00 in the morning when Degala's closing, it's a service. And you can find three or four people urinating against Degala, against other buildings, no problem. If you want, we'll film it and record it on YouTube. Anyways, since the beginning of the year, we've had, on the first of the year, we started with a huge fight in front of Degala at 5:00 in the morning, where I think at least four patrol cars, four patrol cars were required to come. On February 25th, there was a disturbance that was large enough that 11 patrol cars All units, all units respond. That's what we got on the radio. That's our complaints just since the beginning of the year. If you want, we can pull our complaints for the past two years. So, and then literally a week, two days later, we had, sorry, a week later, we had another situation where a fight occurred and four patrol cars were necessary. So, we have a bar that you guys are willing to license, and the only way we can license it is by having a uniformed officer parked in front of the place the entire time it's open. And on top of that, it's necessary for up to 12 police cars to come, and this is in a completely residential neighborhood. It is R5A, permitted uses R. Single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, I think, other permitted uses are townhouses or churches. So I'm assuming that Degala inherited grandfathered the variance, which probably the pizza mill had. But I doubt as whether a variance was ever, I know that a variance was never obtained to turn, to allow Degala to operate as a nightclub. And that's what it is. Now, if you go to other towns, you'll find that mainly they put them on like Route 36 or, you know, Route 18, or put them on the major thoroughfares where they're away from residential homes so that tax-paying, rent-paying homeowners can enjoy the quiet of their home. We're regularly woken up at 2:00 in the morning when we're trying, or already gone to sleep, and we're woken up out of a cold sleep. So, I think that's all that I have. And, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other member of the public would like to?
Yes. Here's Mary from 15011. Basically, my point is that from my experience, obviously, I live across the street from the establishment, and obviously, just from my being woken up, like Will said, at 2:00 in the morning, anywhere between 1:00 to 3:00, I'm, whether I've gone to bed or not, I'm basically up. And, you know, I've experienced many patrol cars having to come to the establishment, people outside, but regardless of the crowd that comes outside of the establishment at closing, which there are more limitations as far as I understand, my biggest issue is with the sound system and the functioning of the establishment inside. It seems to me that the license that they currently hold gives them permission to function as a tavern, which according to the zoning definition means that a place, it is a place where the principal use or function is the selling of alcohol beverages, and incident thereto may be the retail sale or consumption of food as a permitted use consistent with New Jersey law. From my experience, they seem to be functioning more as a nightclub, which according to the definition is any place of business serving alcohol or beverages for consumption on premises wherein people assemble for the main purpose of being entertained, whether such entertainment consists of dancing or other activities. So although this may not be the main purpose at all hours, as they do function as a restaurant, bar, grill for a majority of the day, it's obvious that on weekends, on weekends, weekend nights, they function more as a nightclub. And this is just by a simple online search, and I can hand you some copies of what I have. There are photographs, I know you won't have the opportunity to follow the links and videos as well right now, but it's very obvious that the place is being promoted, the events that are being held there are being promoted as parties with live music and DJs. They obviously have a large sound system, which you can definitely see is obvious through the videos. In the videos, it's evident that this is in no way would be able to function as a restaurant because it's pitch black, there are strobe lights, and there's a DJ. So I mean, nowhere in the video, as it does 360 or even 180, can you see anywhere where someone might be able to be sitting down and enjoying a family dinner or even on a date. So based on that, based on what we've heard and what we've experienced, and based on the data that's been collected by the police department, it's my opinion that the establishment is functioning outside of its permitted functioning. And obviously, we've had to bear the brunt of that because most of us have either jobs or are students and have to wake up early, and it's not really, our schedule's not flexible enough for me to be up until 3:00, 3:30 in the morning and wake up at, you know, as early as 6:00. So it's definitely made a huge difference in our lives. So thank you so much, Ruth Hadd.
Thank you. Any other member of the community would like to address the council on this specific hearing? Yes?
We have Paulina, 153 Nickel Avenue. I'm also the president of the Second Ward neighborhood block club and crime watch. I'm passing out the letter that our block club approved. Our members are very concerned that we have commercial establishments in our neighborhoods that violate our zoning code, our noise ordinances, and the social norms of residential neighborhoods. Currently, the Degala Cafe is operating as a nightclub even though it is not zoned as such. In addition, the special restrictions that were put on its liquor license were suspended for reasons that are not clear to me. For at least five years, some of our members have experienced degraded quality of life as a result of increasing problems at Degala, as documented in the city's own tavern report. We firmly believe that the, we as a block club believe that the poor quality of life in any neighborhood can lead to neighborhood instability and terrorism crime rates. In addition, noise and compromised quality of life cause homeowner occupants to sell their homes and move out of their neighborhoods. I have to tell you, this is a regular, this is, I hear this regularly at our block club meetings, we can speak to the police who attend, people have even moved out. According to the U.S. Census, owner-occupied homes in New Brunswick declined 6% between 2000 and 2010. The city currently has an owner-occupied occupancy rate of only 25% as opposed to the state of New Jersey's rate of 65%. So I and other block club members conclude that the quality of life in our neighborhoods matters to the long-term stability of our community. We urge you to vary the screen and state of restrictions on Degala Cafe, but would prefer that you also inform our city's zoning and noise ordinances.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to address the council on this matter? Yes, sir? Name my address, please.
Noah Haberschmidt, 154 Commercial Avenue, apartment 2. Again, speaking to so much of the non-personal experience, the level of the music and phase is extremely loud, and it's persistent, meaning consistently loud, particularly on Sunday evenings going into Monday morning, which regularly impedes the ability to properly get up on time and go to work. I mean, I teach early in the mornings, and I have a nightclub next door that's consistently playing music till wee hours of the morning, which is a little concerning. But I would say that the primary concerns, which I've consistently reported to the police department, consist of public urination, public vomiting, as well as a lot of congregated patrons outside of the establishment on Stevens Street and Commercial Avenue, leading to the union. I know the police department has been very helpful at times, and they may have quickly responded, so just like I said, I do really appreciate their work and contribution. But as a resident, I find it a little perplexing as to why it's so loud and excessive Sunday evening into Monday morning. Other than that, I'm just, I don't know the rules and the regulations, so I can't go to the state much else.
Thank you. Anybody else want to, yes, sir?
My name is Peter Montague, 153 Nickel Avenue. I would just ask you to, at a minimum, reinstate the strictest possible requirements on this facility because it's obviously burdening the residential neighborhood and degrading the quality of life in our neighborhood. And I'd actually like you to go further than that. I'd actually like you to ask Mr. Patterson to confirm the zoning status of this facility and ask Mr. DeBonis whether or not he thinks it is functioning more as a restaurant or more as a nightclub. And if it turns out that it's operating more as a nightclub, don't allow that. Don't make a mockery of the laws that are on our books. Please enforce the zoning ordinance and support the neighborhoods, the residential neighborhoods of New Brunswick. There are plenty of places in New Brunswick where it's perfectly appropriate to have a nightclub. The Degala happens to be located in one where it is not appropriate, and that needs to change. Thank you very much.
Anybody else wishes to address the council on this matter? Anybody else please?
Well, I'm going to talk about myself because I can't talk for nobody else. But I can complain about Degala, I'd be right in front, and I can't say they have the noise. I go to school, so, you know, I remember, I have a song to his tune, and my song, "You don't cry during the night because you hear a lot of noise," nothing. So I can't complain about noise, about nothing else in Degala. That's my own spirit. So I can't say that I hear noise like they say, I can't say I have seen any inappropriate thing, nothing. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to address the council? Name my address, please.
I live exactly across the street from Degala, and my window is right in front. And some weeks I work seven days, I work Saturday and Sunday, and it doesn't affect my sleeping. I'm up at 4:00 every morning, fresh face from work, so I have no problem.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wishes to address? Name my address, please.
I have some children, they live 145, too much area. I don't have no complaint about the bar, but it's quiet over there, and I live across the street from the bar. I never had no complaint by the bar, a lot of noise.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else from the public wishes to address? Name my address.
I moved from that address like three months ago, and I have three kids, and they go to school, and I work in a company, and I never have no problem with the music at Degala.
Thank you. Sir?
I live next to Degala, 67 Stevens Street. Definitely, I have no complaint about that. I speak where, where I wake up every morning, I sit for a glass, I have any complaint about Degala.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to address the council on this matter?
My name is Gary Dia, 131 East Roswell Avenue. I don't want to complain about noise from Degala, and I have a beer, and I don't have a lot of noise.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to? Let me see, I also want to ask, then we can go back to you. Anybody else who has to, Mr. Cradaville?
Yeah, Charles Cradaville, living in the Fifth Ward in New Brunswick. I just wanted to know, when was it supposed to happen that these, that this hearing was actually supposed to happen?
What do you?
I remember being at these meetings in 2010, and at the meetings, there was, the restrictions were lifted from Degala, and I recall quite vividly that the council made a decision to lift the restrictions temporarily for 90 days, and the agreement was made that in 90 days, it would be revisited. And I don't recall that ever happening, so I wanted to ask, what, when in 2010 was this supposed to happen and why is it taking two years or three years to have this hearing happen?
I think it was less than, like I said, remember when I got here, and I haven't been here for three years yet, we did talk about, that's when we put, we lifted the restriction, and we did say that we were going to be revisiting and expanding on how everything was going. So I would, as the council indicated, that it didn't happen until it was pointed out to us that we needed to go back to that. So that's the only thing that I could tell you, take responsibility for that. So I can't tell you why it didn't happen, but I'll take responsibility that it didn't do it.
So it was supposed to happen years ago?
Well, nine years ago, last year.
2012.
Actually, last year, that's when we were supposed to.
Fall of 2012.
That's why I said, that's why I said I haven't been here three years ago. Because last year, we did talk about, that's when we didn't, so.
So I guess, just, if I could just add, Madam Council President, and I know that we tried to agendize this through the clerk's office earlier than this month, in fact, just after the first of the year, and I know that counsel for the licensee had requested a German because his client was out of the country. And then there was a request for another German, the availability of witness, I think. So unfortunately, we're here today, but it hasn't been years.
Yeah, but it just, you know, but it didn't happen within 90 days, that we have to.
Right, right. Well, so just in the future, when we say 90 days, we'll revisit it, let's either revisit it in 90 days or end that temporary thing after the 90 days, so it doesn't, it can't continue for this long.
Thank you, Madam. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I just want to say that our house is 50 feet from the side of Degala, and Degala's about 100 feet deep and so is our house. So we share, we face each other directly 50 feet away. We are the closest house to Degala. I certainly don't doubt that any of the people here don't experience noise problems, but we do. And the number of calls for service accelerating from 10 to 83, and Degala now being the number one complained about bar in New Brunswick, not just by us, but by other people in the neighborhood obviously as well, doesn't come from nowhere. I also wanted to say that when Degala is open, there's actually nowhere for us to park, and the officer in front does not enforce the parking laws. People park within like 3 feet of the corner, on all four corners. So you'll have literally eight parked, at least eight cars parked illegally every corner. And it's impossible for us as residents to park. There's 24-hour-a-day resident permit parking. We have an absentee no-er park, and that's only when Degala Cafe is open. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council on this matter?
My name is Jessica Diesma. I live on West Stevens, and she's an elderly person, and we have no complaints about the noise.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to address the council on Degala?
Hi, my name is Colin Jolly, and I'm here to, I guess, try to figure out when Degala will be opening. I have kind of read up about it, and I did notice that there were a few, I guess, problems on the agenda that they were wishing to, I guess, familiarize themselves with and try to figure out when exactly it would be implied for it to, you know, have certain type of restrictions as the ordinances have been previously mentioned, but I'm not too sure about the actual.
Who'll address that? I guess, I knew this song, I'm talking about Degala, she doesn't know much about when it was open and some of the restrictions. Anybody else wishes to address the public on this, I mean, council on this matter? Yes, Mr. Piven?
I have a question. Is this the only step, the only bar that has a policeman outside of it? Because every time I come, like I arrive, there is a cop always stationed there. And is this the only bar in town?
Well, I know that we have Topical, but it's also, based on the number of.
Maybe another one or two, but I can't recall.
And any other complaints as far as like residents from other bars? Like, is this?
It's not only Degala. We have heard about other establishments like Topical, Topicala from George and Marshall. We have heard also some concerns from residents about that establishment also.
And what was, what was the Degala prior to it being the Degala?
Pizza, actually, pizza.
Oh, so this was, this has been in place, this establishment has been this sort of business for decades, from now to today?
Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council?
Mr. Bradshaw, I think at this point, Madam Council President, may want to address the council.
Yes, my police counsel, Patrick Bradshaw, behalf of Degala Cafe. I just want to put these things in perspective because things have been, I just want to narrow the focus to actually what we're talking about here tonight, and I think the last gentleman's point is a good segue to do that. This is an establishment that is not going anywhere. It is a legal use where it is. Certainly, Mr. Patterson and the zoning office can look to see if there's zoning violations, but a liquor establishment is going to be here. It's been here for a long time. It's been in this neighborhood for a long, long time. And the focus of tonight's hearing, and I'll give you a little bit of timeline, it was in July of 2010 that the council lifted one restriction that was in place, okay? The one restriction that was in place was regarding music, and it was for only two nights of the week, and it was only for a couple of hours, and I'll give you those hours. The prior restriction was that on Saturday night, the music had to be turned off at 1:00 a.m., and on Sunday night, the music had to be turned off at 11 a.m. And the restriction was lifted to allow the music to play until business closed. So on Saturday night, you're talking about the difference of about 45 minutes, and now you're, and Sunday night, you're talking about two hours and 45 minutes. That's all we are talking about here. We kept in place voluntarily the police presence there, which, in case anybody doesn't know, we pay for that. We kept it in place on Friday nights, we kept it in place on Saturday nights, we kept it in place on Sunday nights. It's still there. I'm not here tonight to address arson and rock-stroing and other catastrophic events. That's not why we're here. It has nothing to do with that. Doesn't have anything to do with public urination. It doesn't have anything to do with parking violations. That's not why I'm here to address it. That's not what the council's here to speak about and to make a decision about. We have police presence there because that was one of the restrictions and it's still there in place. Now, back to the timeline. So July 2010, after hearing testimony from the officer that's primarily stationed there, and I had hooked him beer tonight, but he's on vacation, and you can hear from him if you need to, he came and he testified that many, I don't want to say most, but I'd like to, because it's close, of the noise complaints that were phoned in were unfounded. He's standing there. Now, you've heard from one gentleman who's very adamant about this, and he's very adamant about the numbers and how many calls there are. Now, I have to question, how many of those calls are actually made by him? I suspect a great number of them, and he's welcome to testify, how many are there actually made by him? Because he clearly knows that by calling him, whether they're founded or not, they're going on this report. So it's in his best interest to skew the numbers as best as he can, and I believe he has, but that doesn't make those founded. Now, I've looked at the report for the past year, from 2012 to February of this year, and of the 53 reports, by the way, many of them are not on. And of the 53 reports, by the way, many of them are not on Saturday and Sunday nights. So a noise complaint on Wednesday, and there are several of them, a noise complaint on Friday or Monday, and I'm not talking about the theoretically that it shifted over because they called late on Sunday night, making it a Monday, are not the nights that these restrictions were ever in place for. That's not what we're talking about. And by the way, the bars are even open on Monday and Tuesday. And it closes at midnight on Wednesdays. So, you know, he's trying to run an establishment, and he's trying to do it. And I think the council has a responsibility, both to the commercial side of the town and the residential side. And I think that the restrictions that we have in place, primarily being police presence, is at great expense every weekend. How much is that every... $1,500 every weekend for the police presence? Is significant. And so by asking to be allowed to play music during those business hours, I don't see it as going too far. And I think the council has had the opportunity to hear from the public. And certainly, everybody's entitled their opinion. But I think, you know, you can get a good sense that many of the people that live right there, and we got all their addresses, do not have a problem with this. One resident does. But he has a global problem with the bar. He has a global problem with the establishment being there at all. It's not going anywhere. And I did receive the Neighborhood Watch report. I'm not sure, quite frankly, and I do mean this in respect, that when the, that letter was written, that the person writing it actually knew what the restrictions were. She just says, "I think I'd like them to be back in place." But did they realize how limited the restrictions are? That we were only talking about 45 minutes on one night and two hours and 45 minutes on the next? I don't think so. If you read the letter, and I'm welcome to read the letter, she wants the bar closed. The bar is not going to close. Now, we certainly want to work with people in the neighborhood. And I gave, when I appeared here in June of last year, I offered to meet with this gentleman and to speak about problems. I was never contacted. My client was never contacted. So, I mean, I don't know what else we can do other than to show the board that there is enough here to show that the restrictions, as they exist today and as they've existed since July of 2010, are sufficient. And to put more restrictive on it is not going to solve the problems that I've heard tonight. Because I've heard from the public that the noise isn't a problem but for two or three people. And again, the testimony that was before this council, the time you lifted the restrictions, we put in evidence that we have increased the soundproofing materials, changed the dynamics of the bar. And we had done affirmative, spent a lot of money in doing that. And that was one of the reasons the council said okay to lifting the restrictions. So the other disturbances and the fights and vandalism and whether or not the gentleman feels fear for coming and testing, I can't address that. It's impossible. It's a moving target. And it really has nothing to do with the focus up here, which is just those couple of hours of different music. We're still willing to have the police presence in place. And so we're appealing to the council. And again, I think that, because I don't have the benefit of the officer primarily stationed here, I think, yeah, you can concur with Detective DeBones that many of the calls are unfounded when it comes to noise complaints.
Anybody else wishes to address the council before one more one? Yes, sir?
You have a sign proof, only time you hear noise, when you open the door, when the people come outside. And the other time, you can't hear no, no, no noise. Only time you hear is when the people come outside. You got a sign proof. You build it inside, you build a sign proof inside. Only time you hear noise, when you open the door to come out. But other than that, it may make you hear noise.
Thank you.
Mr. President, Glenn, is this work? I'm not a resident of this community, but I attend the meetings. They're crime watching. I'm just curious to ask you two, three questions, probably. One is, do you know when the police officer was assigned to stay in front of the Degala to monitor whatever goes on there?
When did it start?
Yeah.
Was that the...
With the decision that the council made? Or the owner made? Or the residents and police department made together?
To become Degala detective.
How did it come in? Did you go ask for that?
Detective DeBones might be able to answer.
My understanding is there wasn't hearing. The restriction was placed on the license by the city council.
So pretty much the city, pretty much the city council.
That was eight years ago. I just told that.
And then maybe that's it. Either Detective DeBones ordered, kept no... Does that officer engage noise complaints, noise violations?
When he's there?
Or just...
Does he?
Yes, that would be part of his job description.
Okay, so a call goes into the dispatcher, and then that officer notified him.
I mean, he'll stick it away.
I just wondered what the primary...
Functions?
Yeah, function, that's right, thank you.
So if you give us the primary functions of officers, I believe, is the one...
He is one of the officers that works here for Wednesday and more. We address quality of life issues in the surrounding area at the establishment and surrounding communities. We would address any type of parking issues which would fall under quality of life issues. And basically, just piece that area in general.
In every poll, and I just want to add that, I know last year, when we're talking about this license, I remember that we encouraged the officer who works there to come out of his car.
That's right.
And walk around and do that, because there were some observations that he was usually in the car. And so I'm assuming that that has been done, that he pissed up and...
That was brought to our attention in one of the previous meetings. My understanding, it has been addressed. I haven't heard any complaint that had today. So I'm assuming, and I do know that the officers have been spending more time out of the vehicle, being more proactive in the surrounding area.
And so the third, the conclusion would be, I think that the officer is not just there to function as an intermediary for the dispatcher and rest of the police department to address noise warning violations only, correct?
There is, yes.
It's quality of life issue generally, right?
So he has anything that he...
So there is a relevance beyond just...
Yes, the noises as well. I have one question, Detective DeBones. How about the parking situation? How is it handled?
The officer should, the officer should address that issue. I do have a note that I wrote down. We're going to make sure that in the future, that issue's addressed and that's a high priority. We don't want that to fall through the cracks.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry. You talked about 96 calls and stuff like that. Do we know how many of them were at least founded or found something?
The answer to that question is no. But some of the calls for service, noise complaints, were unfounded. I don't know how many. Some of them are unfounded. However, with this gentleman over here, did say about the door opening, is after, when the door does open, and there's a particular area inside, there is more noise coming from the establishment. So there may not be noise directly related at any particular time, but when a door opens, it can be heard.
I think maybe if the council has any further questions, then while we're done with that, I could revisit what the procedure is at this point.
I just want to tip off my comment for somebody. Yes?
Reverting the police officer that is supposed to take your issues regarding quality of life, including sound and parking. Just going to give you an anecdotal evidence. I spoke to the officer about a year ago. I went out, usually I don't have a conversation with anybody. I will be emotionally respectful. I went out to him and I asked him about what was going on, what he could do, or his, gave him kind of the synopsis of work, where I was at, up to that point, in relation to the issues that I was dealing with regarding the establishment. And he blatantly expressed to me that parking and that sound were not his problem. He said that the only thing that I'm supposed to do out here is make sure that people aren't fighting, that there is no people drinking outside. He may have said that there is no public urination. I don't recall. But I know for a fact that he told me that noise and parking are not part of my job.
That was a year ago, right?
Yes.
Should I address that?
Yes.
That is part of the job description. I can't comment on one specific officer, who may or may not have said something on a particular night. But I assure you that is part of the job description.
No, because I realize it's anecdotal evidence.
So for further knowledge, you know, if anything else happens, you heard here that that's part of his functions when he's there.
Understood.
Yes, question.
I would just like to ask Detective DeBones what his opinion is on Degala Cafe? How does he feel? How is it operating?
Some individual brought up earlier that maybe operated as a club. Officially, Mr. Patterson has to answer that question. My understanding is, to operate like a club, people would be there primarily for entertainment. And that is a valid argument at this specific location. Certain times of the evening, people are there primarily for the entertainment. Why would someone have to soundproof a particular wall if the music wasn't loud? And people weren't there for dancing and/or some type of entertainment? Glenn Patterson would be better qualified to answer that question. From my understanding, they would lean towards a club activity in the evening, as I know. Thank you.
Right along the same lines. Before we officially decide what it is between a bar or a club, it's all about perception sometimes, you know? Because we've heard two sides. We've heard some residents saying they do have a problem. And then some residents saying they don't have a problem with the music. So now, we got to deal with the middle ground, which is perception. Now, if some of those calls were unfounded, you know, and suppose somebody did make a lot of the phone calls that were unfounded. My only question is, if I'm looking at this, this right here, these flyers, like this? First of all, who printed them? And then, to me, this says nightclub, in my perception. This says nightclub. And also, I personally, because I wanted to get a better view, walked the neighborhood, because I know walking neighborhoods. Anyway, just wanted to get a feel for, you know, what was going on and stuff like that. And if you have drink specials, if you have DJs coming from where you... This is just my perception, nobody has to agree with it. But I always wanted, I don't like being, you know, like, like they say, if it walks like a duck, talks like a duck, then guess what it is? Now, if you have drink specials, if you give out flyers, if you have to put soundproof, like we just said, to me, that says nightclub. That's just me. I mean, I may be wrong, but that's what it says to me right now. Now, before we get an official, you know, before we get an official declaration of what is it? Because we're trying, we're being asked to rule on a very narrow restriction. But those two hours or that hour or so, that makes a big difference between a bar, a nightclub, and then people have a right, residents have a right, to not have a public nuisance in their neighborhood. And that's just where, that's what, before we got to that.
Mr. Patterson, can you, I know you have done this before, but before we continue to proceed, if you could just, for the benefit of the who have not heard, what is the senior specifically for Degala Cafe and the establishment?
I think Mr. Bradshaw has referenced previously. It's a legal non-confining use for a restaurant to be there. It's been used as a pizza mill, I think it was something before that, for many decades as that. The types of activities, I can't, I have no idea how it was used 40 years ago. But it does seem to have become potentially more entertainment oriented. Whether it's a nightclub or a restaurant, it's a somewhat subjective determination. As, I believe Mr. Barker read earlier, what the definitions are for a nightclub, it's whether you're primarily going there for the entertainment value. One of the criteria that we look at to determine that is whether a cover charge is being placed on someone going into the establishment. Well, in theory, that if you're just going out to a restaurant, you normally don't pay a cover charge to get in the place. I believe there were some flyers here that have been, I haven't seen those, so I'm not sure whether they're saying, you know, it's $20 to get in the door or something like that. But if it's that, that would be an indication that they're operating more as a nightclub. A restaurant or as they say, a bar can have music as sort of a background-type atmosphere. You might be, you know, the owner might put soundproofing in to be extra sure that it's not disturbing the neighbors. But if they're playing it very loud, you can hear the thumping bass across the street and so forth, that's usually not what one would consider a dining atmosphere. So you have to take all these different factors into account to determine what it is. It's a subjective type of thing. It may take a number of visits to the facility or getting reports from the police officer who's out there as to what that activity is going on to determine it exactly. But there does seem to be, there'll be some indication that it's being used, that it's more than just a sit-down restaurant with a little bit of background music or a jukebox. I hope that clarified, thanks.
Thank you. Sherry?
Yes, Madam Council President, members of the council. Just as long as everyone understands, let me go through this again. Mr. Bradshaw was correct, and I believe you all understand that the purpose of this hearing is to revisit the relaxation of the two special conditions regarding turning off the music at 1:00 a.m. on Saturday evenings and 11:00 p.m. on Sunday evenings, which this council, when they renewed the license back last year in June, had decided they would, they would hold those particular special conditions in avance, okay? What happens with the renewal of liquor licenses? This council, at this time, if you wanted to put additional restrictions on this license, you can't. You can't do that until the time of renewal, okay? So just so everybody's clear on that. This particular hearing also has nothing to do with zone violations or whether it's a permitted use or isn't a permitted use. Those things are best dealt with with the zoning officer. And at the time of renewal, which comes up, quite frankly, in just a few months, the council could look at all of those issues and decide at the time of renewal, if they want to impose additional special conditions. Maybe that address additional issues that have been brought up here tonight. But the only issue for consideration by the council here this evening is that very narrow issue that I just described. If the council so desires to remove, okay, the provision of the ordinance that was passed last year that said, no, they can keep the music on until closing on Saturday and Sunday evenings, then so be it. If not, the council also has the pleasure of continuing to hold those special conditions in avance or suspending them, if you will, until this license comes up to renewal again. So that is the very narrow issue that's for consideration before the council.
Any council members who...
So are we... So right now, just to make clear, right now, Degala has live music, a recorded music, is shut off at 1:00 a.m. on Fridays and Saturdays?
No, no, no. They have, they just, let me explain again, okay?
Please spread this out.
I don't know that I'm one.
Right. You want to impose, if you decide to impose the special condition, then you will go back and have them turn off the music, live or recorded, at 1:00 a.m. on Saturday evening and 11:00 p.m. on Sunday evening. The way it is now is they're allowed to have that music until closing on those nights.
Saturday and Sunday.
Right.
Correct. Friday, no, we didn't suspend that. Friday is still allowed to shut off at 1:00 a.m.
At 1:00 a.m. Degala. But it's, so it's Saturday and Sunday, the only ones that we are...
Considered.
Considering.
Correct.
And on Sunday, at this time, it's up to one...
Till closing, closing, till 2:00 a.m.
I, in my, you know, my opinion is on Sunday or two, closing is kind of late, especially when people have to work. So I would really consider going, like, we had at 11:00. when people have to work, so I would, I would really consider going, like we had at eleven.
Yeah, you can only go back to eleven. You can't decide at twelve, it either has to be.
No, 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 eleven, Sundays. Just because Sunday is the day that, you know, the next day they're going to go to work, whether they're here or not, eh.
Well, I, I think that was the council's mindset when they initially came up with the suspension of the issues.
So that would be my.
Let's blow the guy.
Two AM.
So, so it's really only an hour earlier on Saturday?
Correct.
Eleven o'clock. So what do we, uh, council, what do we have to do? Is this a form of a motion?
Yes. It indicates to me how the, uh, the council would like to proceed, and I'll mark up a resolution, it'll be adopted even now or consented generally.
I definitely would like to go back to the one at eleven o'clock, see how that works.
So you have to make a consent.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion.
We have a motion. Did you hear that, uh?
Yes.
Okay.
Second. And second? Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Aye.
The resolution, uh, we would elect to indicate the vote, and for members of the public and, and council, um, the special condition has now been reenposed and the suspension now has ceased. Thank you.
Thank you.